Jalali Nelson, Naker, Prince, Tao, Tolbert, Bussuri, Council President Bren Moen. Five present, six present and one absent being Councilmember Tolbert.
Please stand if you're able and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda items one through 12 are before you for your consideration.
And item number 10 will be taken separately. Is there anything else on the consent agenda that should be taken separately? Seeing none, Mr. Tao moves the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The consent agenda is adopted as amended. Item number 10, which is Resolution 19-1309 regarding Charlie's at 404 Cedar Street, is being moved to the 5:30 portion of the meeting because it requires a public hearing. Item number 13, Resolution 19-1391, celebrating Urban Roots and its 50 years serving the St. Paul community.
Councilmember Prince?
Yes. I'd like to welcome some of the team who are here today from Urban Roots. And I will ask you, after I read the resolution, to introduce yourselves. This is an impressive accomplishment. We are celebrating Urban Roots and its 50 years serving the St. Paul community. Among the people standing behind me are alumni of Urban Roots, youth interns who have come back and now join the staff. I'm so proud of the work that they do in Dayton's Bluff and on the east side. And I'd like to invite everyone to join me at the annual gala on September 12th. Now, I will read the resolution. Whereas Urban Roots celebrates its 50th anniversary in 2019 and is a vital local institution that cultivates youth leadership through connections to nature, healthy food, and community with its unique Earn As You Learn programs. And whereas the organization has a rich history serving the Twin Cities, beginning as a community developer and evolving into a thriving youth development organization focused on engaging young people on St. Paul's east side and life and work skills focused on healthy food and environmental stewardship while gaining entrepreneurial skills. And whereas it was originally founded as the Community Design Center of Minnesota when its focus included such services as architecture, urban planning, economic development, and food access. And whereas the organization changed its name to Urban Roots in 2014 to reflect the shift in organizational focus to programs for youth and their families on the east side. And whereas Urban Roots has provided opportunities for over 1,000 youth to gain job and life skills through hands-on programming while working with community and business leaders. And whereas today, Urban Roots Earn As You Learn paid internships continue to offer participants unique experience working with local chefs, farmers' markets, park managers, and small businesses. And whereas the three pillar programs of Urban Roots are Market Garden, where interns learn urban agriculture while gaining skills in the seed-to-sale business model; Cook Fresh, where interns develop recipes and prepare healthy meals with the guidance of local chefs; and Conservation, where interns work to improve green spaces in their community. And whereas by participating in Urban Roots internships, St. Paul youth have access to opportunities, education, and skills that will serve them throughout their lifetimes and, as one intern stated, "opening doors to all sorts of new opportunities." And whereas Urban Roots kicked off their 50th year with chef Yi Ahvang, followed by events at Summit Brewery, a variety of tours, parties, and outdoor pizza nights over the course of a year, and will culminate with a celebratory event on September 12th featuring entertainment, great food, silent live auctions. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of St. Paul is proud to congratulate Urban Roots on their first 50 years and thank them for their truly inspiring work supporting youth and learning and connecting with the world around them. And be it further resolved that September 12th, 2019, will be Urban Roots Day in the city of St. Paul in honor of that 50th year.
And with that, could you guys introduce yourselves and maybe say what your titles are?
Hello, I'm Imogene Silver. This is my sixth year at Urban Roots and I am the Social Media and Events Lead. I'm also one of the alumni staff.
My name's Sai. I am a fourth year at Urban Roots and I am the Market Garden Lead.
Hi, my name is Cassandra. I am Conservation Youth Lead and it's been my sixth summer here. And I'm also alumni.
My name is Jacqueline Jandro and this is my fourth year at Urban Roots and I'm the Education Manager.
Hey, everyone. My name is Saba. This is my third year at Urban Roots and I'm the Cook Fresh Program Manager.
I'm David Woods. I'm the Conservation Program Director and I've been with Urban Roots for six years.
I'm Patsy Noble and I'm the Executive Director and want to thank all of you for taking the time and the initiative to make this happen. Thanking Jane and Stephanie as well, and welcome you to join us on September 12th. And just to say that the 60 interns that we employed this summer, many of them were supported by RightTrack, so we're grateful for that ongoing support. The five alumni staff that we hired were a great boon and part of our program model. As you heard, many of the youth are with us over the years, so we really do take pride in a tiered program. And we're always looking for opportunities for them after the alum, so stay in touch and we appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Patsy, and I will present this to you.
Thank you, Jane.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, all of you. And I would say that is a motion for approval by Ms. Prince. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number 14, Resolution 19-1392, recognizing the partnership of Comcast, the Santa Foundation, and St. Paul Public Libraries to help bridge the digital divide.
Ms. Prince?
Yes. Well, again, it's my pleasure to appear before you and recognize this outstanding partnership. Ron Orlando, Carly Warner, come on up and stand with me. Now, I'm about to read another resolution, and that last one was barely long. But I need to tell you that at the event with Comcast yesterday where I read this resolution the first time, I delivered it to a room full of kids between about the ages of four and maybe 12. And they sat and rapt attention, so I expect nothing less from my calls. Recognizing the partnership of Comcast, the Santa Foundation, and St. Paul Public Libraries to help bridge the digital divide. Whereas the digital divide is defined as the gulf between those who have ready access to computers and the internet and those who do not. And whereas nationally, 27% of homes have no broadband service, and according to the St. Paul Public Libraries, 22% of all households in St. Paul have no internet service. And the gap between households with and without internet service is felt more acutely among lower-income households and households of color. And whereas the result is that nearly a quarter of the city's families are without meaningful access to the information superhighway. And whereas for many, that means an inability to accomplish simple tasks such as applying for a job, following their children's progress school, paying bills, and so forth. And for students, it means not having access to the information they may need to complete assignments or perform research for school projects. And whereas last week Comcast announced a significant expansion in eligibility for its Internet Essentials program, offering internet service for qualified low-income households and serving new populations, including people with disabilities, new parents and adults without school-aged children. And whereas yesterday, August 20th, at the Conway Community Center, Comcast International Soccer Great Tony Sanna and the Sanna Foundation and St. Paul Public Libraries held a public event to share this news, announce a new partnership with St. Paul Public Libraries, to support computer training classes and promote Internet Essentials, and unveil a new library delivery truck branded and sponsored by Comcast. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Paul City Council hereby recognizes Comcast and its partners, the Santa Foundation and the St. Paul Public Libraries, in their efforts to bridge the digital divide for St. Paul families. As I said yesterday at this event, we had a gym full of young people, and it was billed as a back-to-school celebration. Once they got there, the attendees were surprised by the giving away of 100 new backpacks, so that every child received a backpack. And then, in the style of Oprah, they presented a laptop computer to two of the students who were older and said, "This is your, we have a special surprise for the two of you." And then after they sat down, they said, "And we have a laptop for each of the families represented in this room." So it was just an incredible moment. So I'd like to ask Carly and Ron to come forward and say a few words, but we are incredibly grateful for this meaningful partnership with our libraries and on behalf of kids and families in St. Paul.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm Ron Orlando, Vice President of External Affairs for Comcast here in the Twin Cities region, which is headquartered right here in St. Paul over across the river at the River Park Plaza office. It was a very special day yesterday, as Councilwoman Prince indicated, but to see the faces of the kids as we gave out 50 laptops to those children and six months of free internet access as well with that. They don't know that yet. They'll be getting that in a separate card, but...
It keeps getting better.
It's a transformative process with the internet as we know today, and it really, we need to close that digital divide gap. And so we're just happy to step forward with the Sanna Foundation, the library, and also Dr. Gothard from the school system, School Superintendent Gothard joined us as well. So thank you so much, Councilwoman, and it was a pleasure having you there and being part of this great celebration.
Thank you, Ron. And here's the resolution for you and for Carly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Prince moves approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted.
That's very nice for us to start our meetings with two heartfelt rounds of applause. Sometimes it doesn't go that way, so we really appreciate being able to take a moment really to celebrate this great, the great things that are happening in partnership in our community. So thanks for bringing those forward, Councilmember Prince.
Item number 15, RLHTA 19-155, ratifying the appealed special tax assessment for property at 1895 St. Anthony Avenue. Its public hearing was held on May 15th.
Ms. Mornant?
The council laid this matter over and was going to reduce the assessment if a co-compliance certificate was issued by today. I'm reporting that a co-compliance certificate has not been issued nor has the inspection been applied for.
And then, Council...
So I recommend approval.
The public hearing was held on May 15th, so this is, was just laid over for final vote. All right. Ms. Nelson?
I would move the recommendation of the Legislative Hearing Officer.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, or six in favor, no one opposed. The resolution is adopted. Item number 16, First Reading of Ordinance 19-54, amending Chapters 61, 64, and 66 of the Legislative Code pertaining to establishing forward zoning districts, site plan review for forward zoning districts, sign regulations for forward zoning districts, references to the Ford Site Zoning and Public Realm Master Plan, and minor and major amendments to the Ford Site Zoning and Public Realm Master Plan. This ordinance is laid over to August 28th for second reading. Item number 17, Second Reading of Ordinance 19-55, granting the application of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority to rezone property at 659 Seago Street from RT1 two-family residential to R4 one-family residential, and amending Chapter 60 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the zoning map. This ordinance is laid over to August 28th for second reading. Item number 18, First Reading of Ordinance 19-56, amending Chapter 409 of the Legislative Code to raise the age of persons allowed to enter liquor stores from age 18 to 21.
Did you have an amendment? Mr. Tao?
Yeah, I, thank you, Council President. I can clarify. I'm gonna not make any amendment at this time, and we'll introduce it next week.
Okay.
With this one.
Okay, thank you.
So this ordinance is laid over to August 28th for second reading. Item number 19, First Reading of Ordinance 19-57, amending Chapter 324 of the Legislative Code to raise the age of persons allowed to purchase tobacco and tobacco-related devices and products from 18 to 21 to be known as the Ed Owens Ordinance.
Mr. Tao?
Thank you, Council President. So this one, latest version, version two, and legisstar a couple amendment changes. The first one is, whereas the city of St. Paul would join, instead of 32 local governments, it'll be 42. And those names, the counties and municipal are added into that. And then, Section, Section 2, Item E, I'm sorry, Item G, the language, we cross off minors and we change it to sell to person under the age of 21 years old or is prohibited. And then other change is we omitted Section 4, Section 3, and Section 4. This talks about minor having possessions of tobacco because penalties for purchase and use of possession have not been proven to reduce tobacco use and a divert focus on fostering responsible retail environment. So that, all of that's been in version two.
Okay. So I want to just clarify, you said 42 in the text. I see 40. Is 40 or 42 what we're moving?
I'm sorry, 40.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that's what we're moving. And then it looks like in Item G, you're really just aligning the 21 years with the rest of the language. It looks like it was omitted the first time through. And then, I was just asking, Ms. Tierney, with, when we delete whole sections, if that also requires re-numeration of the sections? I don't know. And I don't know if that's something that we can fix before final approval, but if we're deleting whole sections, we probably need to, Section 5 would then become Section 3. And so, there's a little more to that business going on there too. But are there questions about this version two? Ms. Naker?
Thank you. I'm curious about the implications of deleting Section 3 and Section 4. It looks like, and I'm just seeing, seeing this now, but that getting rid of Section 3 gets rid of the prohibition against using false identification to purchase tobacco, tobacco-related devices. Does getting rid of that, I guess, what's the purpose of getting rid of that? Does that make it no longer a misdemeanor to use false ID?
Yes?
Or is it somewhere else? So, yeah, I mean, does it, right, are we getting rid of it and it said somewhere else? Or are we now saying it's okay to use false ID? I'm just wondering what we're doing here.
And, and we do have three more readings of this, so if we want to make, you know, clarify that particular section, then that...
Yeah, we can, yeah. I was, I was, I was advised to, to delete that whole section, but we can have further discussion.
And I guess just the same thing for Section 4. It seems like we're saying you can't use, use of tobacco is prohibited by people under the age of 18. We were gonna change that to 21, and now we get rid of, I guess, possession being a misdemeanor and use. So I'm just, I'm not sure what we're doing in these two sections.
And I'm imagining there's a rationale behind this. Is it, would it be possible to bring this version two back next week with greater understanding of Section 3 and 4? Is, Mr. Tolbert?
I think the purpose, the ID part, I'm not quite sure about, but the purpose of the second part is so that it's illegal to sell to anyone under the age of 21. However, it's not a crime for someone between 18 and 21 to possess tobacco. That's what the differentiation. If we want to criminalize someone over the age of 18 who has tobacco on them, we don't want, I mean, there's a lot of reasons for that, but I think that's the differentiation that I was trying to make.
So it would no longer be a crime to possess tobacco if you're under the age of 21?
It's no longer a crime to possess tobacco if you're over the age of 18. However, if you're under the age of 21, you can't buy it.
Okay.
Because, I mean, for many, many reasons.
Is that what this, this seems to get rid of the whole thing?
I think it'd be helpful if Mr. Tao got back to us with that version two and explanations for next week, so we have the opportunity to get that, the answers, questions answered, rather than do this at the table. Mr. Tao?
Yeah, I could clarify that too, because basically what it's saying here is that if someone used a false, fake ID or something like that to purchase tobacco, we would, it would be a misdemeanor, right? And so what we're saying is that even if we charge him with a misdemeanor, it doesn't curb the use of tobacco. And for then, we would have to spend time and resource prosecuting folks who use fake ID to buy tobacco. That's why we took that, Section 3 out.
Okay, so there's, you have an amendment before us, and my request would just be that seems like people, since they're just reading in here and we're not fully sure about this, that maybe if you brought it back next week, we'd be more comfortable voting for it. But that said, it's your amendment, and if you'd like to...
I'm happy to do that. I, and I'll make my point next week.
Okay, and I'm inclined to support you. I just, I feel like there's a little ambiguity about what we're trying to do here and the, making sure that we don't remove important parts in the process of trying to decriminalize some of these smaller offenses. So I appreciate the, the spirit behind what you're doing here. A little clarification would help me vote for it.
Okay.
So...
Would draw my amendment.
For now. Mr. Tao withdraws his amendment.
No problem.
Thank you.
And the ordinance is laid over to August 28th for second reading. Item number 20, Resolution Public Hearing 19-169, amending the city's capital improvement budget and operating budget to reflect the final sale details resulting from the issuance of the GEO various improvement bonds, Series 2019D, and the GEO public safety refunding bonds, Series 2019E.
Oh, I'm, excuse me. So we have moved on to public hearings. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 21, Resolution Public Hearing 19-281, authorizing the Office of Financial Services through the Office of Financial Empowerment to accept a $10,000 Phase 1 grant from the National League of Cities for a new initiative, cities addressing fines and fees equitably.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 22, Resolution Public Hearing 19-270, amending the financing and spending plans in the Fire Department in the amount of $125,000 for contribution received from the state of Minnesota to pay for training and equipment from the Fire Department Hazardous Materials Team.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tolbert moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 23, Resolution Public Hearing 19-271, amending the financing and spending plans in the Fire Department in the amount of $2,400 for contribution received from the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education to pay for training for firefighters.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tao moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 24, Resolution Public Hearing 19-272, amending the financing and spending plans in the Fire Department in the amount of $38,400 for contribution received from the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education to pay for training for firefighters.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 25, Resolution Public Hearing 19-262, amending the financing and spending plan in the Department of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $5,108,578.84 to reflect Metropolitan Council Clean Water, Land, and Legacy Amendment Funds received for parks projects.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? This minor item. All right, seeing none. Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 26, Resolution Public Hearing 19-244, establishing a financing and spending plan in the Department of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $49,284 for star grant funds received for security camera installation for the China Guard Pavilion in Phelan Regional Park.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Bussuri moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 27, Resolution Public Hearing 19-266, accepting an Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund Grant administered through the Minnesota Humanity Center, establishing a financing and spending plan in the Department of Parks and Recreation in the amount of $388,000 for the design of a Mong Cultural Plaza in Phelan Regional Park and entering into a required grant agreement which includes an indemnification clause.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Bussuri moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 28, Resolution Public Hearing 19-205, amending the financing and spending plans in Department of Public Works' capital budget by adding St. Paul Sewer Utility, St. Paul Regional Water Services, and Assessment Funding into the 2019 Fairview Street Reconstruction Project.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jalali Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 29, Resolution Public Hearing 19-216, amending the financing and spending plans in Department of Public Works' capital budget to close out projects.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tao moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 30, Resolution Public Hearing 19-264, approving the application of Gray Duck Media, Growler Magazine, for a sound level variance for outdoor music and announcements for the Unlabeled Events Series on September 20th at Upper Landing Park.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 31, Resolution Public Hearing 19-267, approving the application of Hangman Productions USA Inc. for two sound level variances for outdoor music and announcements on September 6th and 7th during the Red Bull Fluke Tag events on, at Harriet Island in Upper Landing Park.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Naker moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 32, Resolution Public Hearing 19-263, approving the application of Minnesota United FC and Allianz Field for two sound level variances for amplified music on August 27th or 28th for the Minnesota United FC US Open Cup Final Game and on September 3rd for the International Soccer Friendly Event at 400 Snelling Avenue North.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Tao moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 33, Resolution Public Hearing 19-259, approving the application of University of St. Thomas for a sound level variance for amplified sound on August 30th for the University of St. Thomas Welcome Days at O'Shaughnessy Stadium, 2115 Summit Avenue.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jalali Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 34, Resolution Public Hearing 19-260, approving the application of Dual Citizen Brewery for a sound level variance for amplified music on September 14th in the parking lot south of 725 Raymond Avenue for the Dual Citizen Black Party Blocktoberfest.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jalali Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 35, Resolution Public Hearing 19-265, approving the application of the Asian Economic Development Association for a sound level variance for amplified music and performances in the parking lots at 2314 University Avenue and 2274 University Avenue on September 7th and 8th for the Night Market at Chromosome.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jalali Nelson moves to close that public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 36, Resolution Public Hearing 19-261, approving the application of Anderson Race Management for a sound level variance for outdoor music and announcements for the Miles for Melanoma 5K on September 15th at Phelan Park.
It's one of those that should like be miles against melanoma instead of for it or against it. Is there, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? Seeing none, Mr. Bussuri moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Legislative hearing consent agenda items 37 through 55 are before you for your consideration.
And good afternoon, Ms. Mormon.
Good afternoon. Council President Bren Moe and council members. I'm not aware of anyone here to testify on a legislative hearing item.
All right. So we are looking at items 37, you just said it, 37 through 55. If you are here to speak to items, any item between 37 and 55, this is your public hearing. Seeing none, Mr. Tao moves to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Seven in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the consent agenda is adopted as amended.
All right, before we recess for now to our public hearings at 5:30, does anyone have news from the wards they would like to share? We had some great news from Ward 7 earlier in our meeting. Other events or upcoming activities? There's a lot going on, including, of course, the Great Minnesota Get Together, which starts tomorrow. Yeah. So don't go on selling and don't go on Larpenter. And do go to the fair, because it's a lot of fun. Ms. Prince, did you have?
Yes, tomorrow night, August 22nd, Mississippi Market on East 7th Street will be holding its $3 community dinner from 5:00 to 7:30. It's a great deal. It's a great community event, and you'll have fun.
I mean, $3 dinner.
$3 meal.
It's really quite a value, plus the community part of it as well. Any other news from the wards? Great. Seeing none, we are in recess until 5:30. This meeting of the St. Paul City Council will come back to order. Roll call.
Jalali Nelson, Naker, Prince, Tao, Tolbert, Bussuri, Council President Bren Moe. Six present, one absent, being Councilmember Bren Moe, who is excused.
Great. Welcome back, everyone, to the public hearing portion of our city council meeting. I believe the first item on our agenda actually relates to reconsidering an item we voted on earlier today. Councilmember Bussuri.
I move to recall item number 27 to make a correction.
In the, the first whereas and in the title, it said the, the grant was administered through the Minnesota Humanities Center, when in fact, it should be the Minnesota Department of Administration.
Okay, so we are going to vote on the reconsideration? Okay, so all in favor of reconsidering this item, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I'll make a motion to. Mr. Bussuri.
I make a motion to amend from the section where it says Minnesota Humanities Centers to Minnesota Department of Administration.
Want to make sure we're accepting from the right people. All right, all in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The, oh, there needs to be a public hearing.
Oh.
I didn't catch that. Sorry.
And is there anyone here to, to speak on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please. Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted as amended.
And now we are taking an item that was at our 3:30 portion of the agenda, that was supposed to be at our public hearing portion of the agenda, and because it was not noticed as such, it is going to need to, we're going to have the public hearing tonight, and then we're also going to need to hold the public hearing open and continue it next week.
Item number 10, Resolution 19-1309, approving adverse action against the cigarette tobacco license held by Mel Lindholm doing business as Charlie's at 444 Cedar Street.
Welcome, Ms. Scardt.
Councilmember Naker, members of council, Teresa Scardt, on behalf of the Department of Safety and Inspections. This action involves a notice of violation against Charlie's located on 444 Cedar Street in the city of St. Paul. Notice of violation was issued to Charlie's on June 24th, 2019. The notice stated that the cigarette tobacco compliance check, which was done on April 22nd, 2019 by a DSI inspector, showed that they had flavored tobacco products, which were General White citrus and pepper flavor, cigars that were priced at $2 each in violation of the St. Paul Legislative Code, and Jack Link's Original and Teriyaki Beef Jerky, those imitation-type projects, products that are prohibited under Legislative Code 29503. The licensing official recommended a $500 matrix penalty. The licensee did respond and requested a public hearing on this matter.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Scardt? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? This is item 10, earlier in the agenda. No one is here? Oh, okay. Come on up if you're here to speak on item 10 about Charlie's. Anyone who's here to speak on the item, now's your time. So come on up to the, stand right in between those two microphones. We have 15 minutes, but as we always say, we can take as much or as little of that as And as you're coming up, and this is just for all of our public hearings, please just state your name and where you live for the record, and then when you're done speaking or before, if you have a chance, just sign in on one of the two sign-in sheets to the side of the microphones. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Nancy Litten. I've just handed a letter to all of you. I know many of you personally. I don't know if I should be talking first or if Mel should, but it seems, in my letter, I pretty much expressed my concern about the fact that I think this was sort of a small misstep, and I really don't understand why the suppliers are not also included or, you know, why they don't bear some of the burden of not supplying things which are forbidden by statute or advising according to pricing prescriptions. It seems to me that in my wide variety of jobs, here, there, and everywhere, it's a team effort and not just an individual effort. And a convenience store is just that. It offers a friendly opportunity for the citizens to be able to take care of their needs easily and quickly. It's not a big profit generator, and it's not something where people are trying to break the law. You know, I think the laws are kind of a little bit murky sometimes anyway, and these small missteps. I think it's great that we have overseers who come in and give advice, but I don't think they need to levy huge fines against businesses that are operating on a small margin. So that's just my take on things. Any questions that you all might have?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you so much, Ms. Litten, and make sure to sign in.
Okay, were you able to read my letter, too?
Yep, got it right here.
Great. Do you need me to do anything else? Say anything else?
I think.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Lindholm, if you want to come on up, thank you.
Well, my name is Mel Lindholm. I'm, I'm Charlie's. I'm the owner of Charlie's, and we made a mistake. I apologize for that. I, we're just a small business and small business owner down there, and, and I'm on Social Security. Me and my wife work at, Nancy works up there with me, and my, my, my 100% sole income is Social Security for me. And if, if I have to be punished, I have another suggestion what could be done, because I cannot afford to write a $500 check at one time. My business would not allow me to do that. If I have to make a payment, I'm sorry about that, I really am, but it's going to have to be in payments. I'm sorry. Or some other options. I, I'm bringing one option to the table, is to suspend me. Suspend me for a day or two days. I'm willing to look, entertain something like that, because I don't sell that much cigarettes to begin with. As far as a dollar amount, I probably sell $50, $60 a day in cigarettes. And the 500, if I have to, just doesn't make sense as far as shutting me down, just shut me down for two days, selling cigarettes, what I'm talking about. I'll take my punishment that way, but I have no other means of paying it back on a reasonable period of time, and my resources will come from my Social Security check to pay that. And it's hard enough already. Or let's just forget it even happened. That's all I can say. We learned a lesson, and my people have been trained now to be carding. We've brought in a machine now that looks like this clock right here, where we take their driver's licenses, and we swipe it and tells us immediately how old they are. Not their name or nothing, just how old they are. And that has done very well. Yes, yes, I spent money on, to purchase that, because I'll be have to use it in the future and other days. That's all I can really think of. It's, it would be a, a very, hard to make ends meet down there. I mean, it's just, we're small business, very simply put, and, and, and the only reason why, if anybody's curious, why am I retired and why am I taking Social Security? Why am I working? I did retirement, six months. I didn't like it. I didn't like it. I saw a couple of my friends pass away because they didn't have the resources or the energy or something to find something to do. I was not going to be one of those statistics, of those people. So, yeah, I, me and the wife bought Charlie's out, had a good time for him to have his, his doctor and his, his operations. But we've been there for a year now. I thank the people who come in there to support me, and I'm there every day, too. So I, this would be a hardship for us to do it, and if it comes down to it, it would hurt me and my vendors and my people and my customers. Some vendors won't get paid for a few months, and I need supplies to come through there. I, I have nothing more else to say, but I apologize, and I'm sorry. You folks have any questions, what I'm bringing up or anything?
Do any of my colleagues have any questions? I, I do, I want to thank you for coming down, Mr. Lindholm, and, and say, first of all, I do definitely understand your constraints as a small business owner, and I appreciate you taking the time to come here and make that, make that. you taking the time to come here and make that, make that really real for us. I know you can understand the need for the city to enforce these really important public health ordinances that we have set. We do have a matrix penalty that we need to follow to be consistent in how we enforce the rules, so I appreciate the suggestions of other sorts of penalties we could impose, but we do have a matrix we try to follow to be consistent and fair, and $500 is the first level penalty. I am curious, and I have a question for Ms. Scardt too, but you had mentioned in your email beforehand, and you also mentioned tonight, that you would be able to make the payment of $500, but in installments, not all at once. And I'm wondering if you had a sense of what sort of payment plan would be reasonable?
Well, in our case, doing the books, six months. I'm sorry. That's, that's the best I can do.
$500, over six months.
That's it.
Okay.
I understand, you don't, you don't take payments, but rules are, can be changed sometimes.
I checked with our city attorneys before this meeting after seeing your message, just to see if that was something we could do, and it's apparently not something that we often do, but it's something we can do. So I just wanted to, while you were here tonight, we're not going to make a final decision tonight, because the public hearing does need to be left open for another week because of how we noticed it. But while you were here, I did want to get a sense from you as to what kind of timing you thought would be reasonable. So I appreciate that. If none of my other colleagues have questions, we're going to close the public hearing, and, I'm sorry, we're going to keep the public hearing open for another week, but sir, you're free to sit down. And Ms. Scardt, I just have a question for you in terms of the history of this property. Do you know what the history of violations have been here?
Councilmember Naker, members of council, as the licensee stated, he's only had the business for about a year. I don't believe there are any other violations of the license. All it, Ms. Litten, involves is a tobacco license. I don't believe there's been any other tobacco violations. This is a first-time matrix penalty.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Tolbert.
I have a question for Ms. Scardt. I know we don't do it very often, but do, we've done...
I can't hear you.
Sorry. This is for Ms. Scardt.
A question for me?
Sorry.
I'll repeat it.
We have sometimes imposed a fine and then stayed some of it pending no same or similar. Is that something that we legally can do?
You have, Councilmember Naker, Councilmember Tolbert, you have imposed a stayed penalty, and I have advised council that when you do that, you have to be clear about the reasons why you're doing it. So we need to make a record of that under our...
But that could be, that could be an option?
If that's...
With the proper record?
With the proper record.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Scardt. Thank you, Mr. Lindholm. We do need to keep the public hearing open, so we're not going to make a decision tonight, but we'll be making a decision at our meeting next week. Thank you for being here.
I go.
Yep, we both go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we, I'm going to move to continue the public hearing until next week, August 28th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is continued to August 28th at 3:30 PM. Item number 56, Ordinance 19-53, amending Chapter 25 of the Legislative Code pertaining to the supplemental tax on hotels and motels by increasing the imposed tax rate from 3% to 4%.
Great. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this issue? Seeing none, motion for Mr. Tao to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the ordinance is laid over to August 28th for final adoption. Item number 57, Resolution Public Hearing 19-283, authorizing a business subsidy for the Coven Project.
Thank you. And is there a, Mr. Tao's staff report on this, or additional information? Ms. Rick, come on up. I think there have just been some questions about business subsidy. It's not something we see at the table often, and so just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Sure. Councilmembers, I'm Mary Rick with the PED team, and can answer any questions or provide report on this?
I guess, for myself, I just wanted to know more about the business subsidy program, specifically what, what that entails, who that's through. This is the first time I've seen that particular subsidy coming in front of us, and why this is coming to council.
Sure. So, as many of you know, the Coven Project was, was part of the Neighborhood Star slate that was approved last week, but it was brought to my attention through the city attorney's office that because of the amount that the Coven was going to be receiving, and their organization being a for-profit entity, they actually, they were triggering a state statute that provided that there did need to be a public hearing also connected to the approval of the award. So we're still talking about the same project, the same amount of money, but wanting and needing to include that public hearing element as, as part of the formal approval.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Rick? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to be heard on this item? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Alex Weststeinman. I'm the CEO and co-founder of the Coven. I just wanted to say thank you so much. We're a community and workspace for women, non-binary, and trans folks, and we're opening in the Blair Arcade this fall. We are so excited to be expanding into St. Paul. We currently have a location in the North Loop in Minneapolis, and we'll be moving our headquarters to St. Paul, and so we're excited to now be a part of the St. Paul family. So thank you for welcoming us so graciously. We believe, and we know you do too, in the resources and opportunities for women. They often put their resources back into the community, and we've had incredible experience working with the council, working with staff, working with Mary. So I just wanted to say, from our hearts, there's four co-founders, I'm one of them. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Mr. Tao.
Thank you. So, you know, I was brief on the project, and I am really excited about it. It's a great location, and it's a great opportunity for women entrepreneurs, and it's a population that's not always well-represented, so I really appreciate, and I like the concept. One of the concerns that was brought was, what about women who may not be able to afford the membership?
Sure.
Do you have a program that you can share with us for the public record?
Yeah, so we offer a community-funded membership. So for every five paid members, we gift one to someone in the community, often from underrepresented spaces. We really reserve those for folks of color, folks from, veterans, immigrants, anybody who would have traditionally been pushed to the margins. So that has allowed us to bring in over 160 members who don't pay for their membership. Often, a lot of times, they are able to pay for their membership by the end of their community-funded membership because of the resources that they've gotten through the program.
And how do you plan to communicate that, especially with the district council and other partners in the neighborhood, so that they can also share that information?
Absolutely. So we've started focus groups and listening sessions. We just hosted one at Model Cities last week to really get to know the community and better understand who are those touchpoints for us. So we'd love any support from the council, pushing out to your communities as well, and so totally open to other suggestions. But we've started that process over the last few months, and will continue until we open in December and beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Ms. Nelson?
Hey, I'd just like to speak supportively while you're here.
Thank you.
But I'm just excited to see this move forward, and I know the Coven has just brought so many people kind of into its world, getting started in Minneapolis, and I'm just excited to see that you're going to grow and make a home here, hopefully. And so I just think you'd be a great addition to the neighborhood. I used to work at the Blair Arcade, I used to go to Fabulous Ferns when it was still there. So it just feels like a new chapter of stories for that block, and just happy to see you here and hope to be supportive as we move forward.
Thank you.
So thanks for coming up.
Yeah, I have to say, I, when I met with Alex and other leaders from the Coven, I did feel like we're all one city, but I felt this little twinge that word "one" was really getting a, getting a pretty cool prize, so it's very exciting. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Otherwise, I'm going to take that as a motion for Mr. Tao to close the public hearing and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed. The public hearing is closed and the resolution is adopted. Item number 58, Resolution Public Hearing 19-252, approving the establishment of the Riverview Special Sanitary Sewer Availability Connection Charge District, determining the Riverview Special Sanitary Sewer Availability Connection Charge, approving record of restated and combined interdepartment loans and budget amendment.
Thank you. And on this particularly fascinating item, I thought that we'd all benefit from a little bit of background from Ms. Wolf, so thank you. And if you wouldn't mind, since item 59, right after this, is very related, could you speak maybe to both while you're giving the background?
Yes. Councilmember Naker, councilmembers Jenny Wolf with PED, I would like to speak to both this item and the next public hearing, because they are very much related. So this first item here relates to the establishment of a sanitary service charge district. So there was an ordinance adopted in July that allowed this charge to be levied, and a requirement of it was to hold a public hearing to establish the district area boundary that you want to levy this charge in. So PED and Public Works have been working for quite a few years on, on a mechanism to expand the lift station down on Riverview, right across the river downtown, so that it could encourage the development to happen on the West Side Flats and, and other areas down there. So this is a direct result of that. We have development projects in the works. There's three of them that are identified, and those would all need this expanded lift station to happen. Otherwise, they would not be able to get their building permit. So PED has resources to pay for the cost of the upgrade, and the mechanism will be that the properties, when they're ready to develop, will have a determination of how many SAC units they will need, and then they'll be levied a charge. And then that charge will be collected by DSI, and that'll be used to repay the loan from Public Works that PED gave. There is a portion of the funds that are what we're calling a grant, and it's basically the West Side Flats Phase III project, which is HRA-owned property, so the HRA will be paying for that upfront as opposed to going through the charge process. But we will be paying it at the same rate that all the other properties would be levying the charge. So the, so the action before you is to approve the district, and then to approve the loan agreement between Public Works and PED, and then the budget amendment that goes with the sewer capital project. So that's the first item before you.
Any questions for my colleagues on just the first item? Okay.
Okay. And then, do you want me to go into the second item?
Please.
Okay. So then the second item relates to the source that is being used. So the Riverfront Renaissance Tiff District is a Tiff District that includes the US Bank site, Drake Marlowe, the Upper Landing. It includes various projects around the river, and there's what's called a project area that is, the Tiff District is located within, and so we can expend tax increments from that district in the project area. And since the tax increments identified are going to be in the project area for the service area of the lift station, it needs to be expanded, because we want to make sure that any of those charges levied are co-terminous with the boundary of the project area. So that is, the second item is to amend the project area, and that also requires a public hearing under state law. And as we amend the project area, we have to amend the Tiff plan so that we can expend those dollars from the Tiff District in that larger project area.
Great. Thank you so much. This is a little bit technical, so I appreciate your helping us understand it. Any questions for Ms. Wolf? Okay, so we will start with item 58. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Councilmembers, my, my name is Dave Nemec. I am the owner, along with Kelly Nemec, of St. Pride Linen. We are a new business in this neighborhood. We've come into operation in the last year. We were very excited to be in St. Paul because of their sustainability approach, as well as business-friendly approach. We designed into our commercial laundry, which is a large, obviously, large consumer of water, we tried to design into that a water reuse system. We were willing to spend large money on it because we thought we would save on our water bills, as well as it was important for our company and our brand recognition that we try and conserve water. The initial plan was in a large, well, medium-six digits in terms of what the system would cost us. We thought it was the right thing to do. It would reduce our water consumption by 50%, which was huge, millions of gallons a We thought it was, we had a laundry engineer who has designed many laundries across the United States. They thought it was a no-big-deal situation. We then submitted those plans to DSI, and we were met with, no, we cannot recycle and reuse water. We had numerous meetings with the city, and all of those efforts led to an answer of no. We then had to retool a little bit, and that retooling cost is close to $200,000 in terms of additional engineering fees, legal fees, and also repiping different options so that we could meet the DSI requirements. Excuse me. We have since opened, because we couldn't wait any longer and keep fighting the fight to try and do the right thing. We've opened, we've had 24 employees, we're now up to 50, continue to grow, and we're cleaning the linens for some of the large hotels in the Twin Cities area. We paid our SAC fees. We knew that there would be SAC fees. SAC fees are very expensive. That was our way of contributing to the infrastructure to cover everything that we were going to be using water, sending down the sewer. We knew that that would be a toll on the city's infrastructure. Now what has happened with this proposal is we're coming back and we're saying that once we get to a point that we want to add more capacity, we can't do that because we can't reuse water. But on top of that, we now have to pay more in fees, which would be in about six digits, given the calculations of what I've learned about this bill so far, and that would obviously be a hardship to us as we try and grow within the city of St. Paul. Our feeling is that it's, it's attacking a symptom of the problem. The problem is, we should really be able to be sustainable, we should be able to reuse water, and not just meet with no. So while I'm sure that the lift station is necessary, I just don't feel that it should be handled in this way, when we tried so hard to try and reuse water that could be helping the entire city and infrastructure of, of St. Paul.
Thank you.
Anything you want to add? It's, no.
Yeah.
It's disappointing. We continue to grow. We wanted to come to St. Paul because of its sustainability practices, and it's been really sad to me as a millennial, maybe it's a millennial in me. I really want to save the world, save the environment. I want to be green, and the fact that we can't be is, it hurts. And now we're going to get taxed a second time, and we have no choice, so. You know, I want to be able to continue to employ 50-plus people.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Really appreciate you coming down. Ms. Prince?
Is there staff available to be able to address the issue that we just heard about?
I don't think there's staff available to address the sustainability issue that we just heard about. I, I can say, and I really appreciate you both coming down, and I know you emailed me about this earlier as well, and first of all, really glad you're doing business on the West Side, and I can't wait to come by and see you open. I know I haven't been there yet, and I know a ribbon cutting is coming up, and it's exciting. I didn't realize you had up to 50 employees. It's wonderful. Dave and Polly and I worked together to try to get a different answer from DSI, and I know you know how disappointed I was that we continued to get no, and we talked a lot about how in a city where resilience and sustainability is, are two of our big goals, the fact that we continued to run into that no on the reuse of the, of the gray water was really disappointing. And, yeah, I don't know what more to say about that. This lift station, as you did mention, this... This lift station, as you did mention, this upgrade would have been needed anyway, it's the result of development that's happening on the flats, one of the good and bad parts about moving to an area that's developing is that the capacity of that particular lift station, just to get the materials across the river, was going to need to be upgraded because of the housing developments happening in the area actually, and the creation of this district allows us to balance out that cost with all the developments that are going to happen in the area over time. So it's necessary, it would have been necessary regardless of what, whether or not the sustainability issue had been able to be addressed, but to your point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in favor of this tonight, but I do want to follow up with you to your question about the amount of stormwater that you use and how that affects the fee, because to just understand whether it's volume-based versus another metric that would affect your fee, so, Ms. Wolf, I don't know if you can, if you can address that, or if anyone else who's here, Erin can. Just, the question was about how the fees are determined for properties, is it based on how much water you're, how much waste you're generating, how much water you're using?
Right, it's based on SAC, and so the wastewater fees are basically...
Can you, yeah, can you, sorry, can you come up to...
Hi, my name's Aaron Hass with St. Paul Sewers, Councilmembers, I have a question, I'll try to take a shot at answering. So wastewater fees are basically guarded from the sewer utility from issuing or sending out the bills via the water utility, and there's a fee that's passed along to all commercial and residence, commercial and residential properties to pay for the sewer's costs to maintain the city's sewer systems. There is also a stormwater rate charge applied to different properties in the city and offline. We can work with folks to try and answer their questions if there are questions related to stormwater charges.
Okay, thank you, are there other questions? Erin?
But...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's helpful. All right, is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Come on up.
Ms. Necker and Councilmembers, I'm Jack Heschler from 1630 Edgcombe in St. Paul. I did not intend to speak on this item, and in fact, I don't know enough about it to be certain of how I would vote with respect to it, while I recognize the need to probably to have the lift station, I catch the concept, I believe, of expanding the TIF district, and I think that that's what's happening here, if I'm not correct, and it is as to that point that I rise to speak to at least be one voice to warn the council about the deleterious effect in the long run of adding more and more and more to the TIF districts, because I believe the effect of that will be to capture the tax, additional taxes in that district, in that expanded district, and to make those taxes not available for the general fund. And so I simply say to you, look long and hard, think hard about that, because every time you expand a TIF district, it is taking money from the general fund, it is depleting the money available for libraries, for rec centers, for streets, may I say, and so the long and short is, I simply rise to say that, watch out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, please sign in. Ms. Wolf, do you want to speak to that? Sort of the question about the impact of creating, expanding the TIF boundaries to encompass this, I didn't think that had any fiscal impact on our...
No, we're not expanding the TIF district boundaries, which is what generates the increment, we're expanding the area for which we can spend the increments. So it's enlarging the area so we can complete the upgrade to the lift station that will service the larger area.
Okay. Ms. Nelson?
I thought that my understanding was we had also been able to reap some of the TIF revenues back, and so this is to allow us to spend it to help move the project forward, is that part of what this vote is about too?
Right, so the, yeah, there's the loan, record of loan with Public Works, that will require the collection of the fees, and then that will repay, and since TIF is the source, the money will go back to the TIF district.
So to kind of confirm both of the pieces that we're asking, we are not expanding the size of a TIF district or the amount that's been approved, we're actually voting to be able to spend it on more areas within the scope of the project, is that correct?
Right, so we'll use the tax increments to complete the upgrade, and then the potential for as development happens to regenerate money that can be spent again.
Right, okay, thank you.
Ms. Prince.
And Ms. Wolf, is this extending the time period of the TIF?
No, we're not doing that, and we can't do that without getting state law allow, and we cannot expand the TIF district at this late date either without state law change, so we're just working within the confines of the Minnesota statutes, which allows us to expand the project area through this hearing process, and that's the area that we can spend the increments, but we're not changing the generation or the term of the TIF district itself.
And this is to spend TIF proceeds?
Yes, existing TIF that we have.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Wolf?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I, any other discussion for my colleagues? Ms. Prince.
On the first part about the lift station, I regret that I didn't understand, I didn't anticipate the complexity of this, I'm really concerned about what we heard from St. Croix-Lincoln, but do I understand that the lift station is needed anyway, and that the issues that they've raised are something we may be able to pursue in another way, or is this, because what concerns me is we have a resilience policy and a chief of, a chief resiliency officer, was he involved in all of your discussions about how to address this?
He was, and ultimately, this came down to an interpretation of the state building code by our, by DSI, and not for lack of a lot of conversation and attempts to bring in higher-ups.
Well, I do, I have very little patience with that, it's my understanding that if, and I, and I don't, I don't necessarily agree with our city attorney's stated opinion to my office on another matter involving the building official, but we can appeal that to the state building council, as I understand it, has that been considered?
I don't know if that's, if that's been considered, and I would say, I mean, these are, these are separate issues, so the lift station is needed for further development, any further development to happen on the flats, and it was actually initiated by the Sherman West Side Flats Phase III project, so that was what was the impetus for creating it. I think what's happening is that this other issue of not being able to reuse the gray water is then going to increase St. Croix-Lincoln's charge as part of this district, which I agree with you, I would like to find a way to make that not happen, but I think we can, and I'd be happy to work with you on that, pursue that separately, but we do need to, we need this lift station or we can't build anything else on the flats. So, and to Dave and Polly, I wanted to say the same thing, I'm happy to continue talking with you about ways, especially with this new negative impact on your business, to take this conversation forward, I know we feel like we hit a dead end before, but you know how frustrated I was, and it sounds like another of my colleagues is now frustrated too, so let's connect after this to talk about that other issue. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for coming down.
I'm gonna move to close the public hearing, and this is on number item 58, and approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion prevails.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 59, Resolution Public Hearing 19-276, amending the redevelopment plan for the Riverfront redevelopment project area, and approving the adoption of an amendment to the tax increment financing plan for the Riverfront Renaissance redevelopment tax increment financing district.
And we kind of just talked about this too, but, anyone here to speak on this item? This is a public hearing. Seeing none, Ms. Nelson moves to close the public hearing and approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is adopted. Item number 60, Resolution Public Hearing 19-207, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 street maintenance service program, Mill and Overlay, Western Avenue from Larch to Front.
Thank you, and there is a version two that our city attorneys just needed to clean up some language, so I'm gonna move version two, which is in Legisstar, we need to vote on that, so all in favor of version, looking at version two, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six in favor, no one opposed, the amendment is approved.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this item? Simon, welcome.
Good evening, I'm, oh, sorry, Councilmember Naker, members of the council, I'm Simon Tagheoff from Fair Street, St. Paul. We speak on behalf of countless residents affected by this issue. We're here today because the city council still thinks it's okay to charge people who live on arterial streets in our city thousands of dollars to maintain them when their neighbors pay little to nothing. That's not fair, and it's not legal. The value of the streets is that they are a network, they let everyone get around, they're a basic service that the city provides to its residents. The people who live on a busy arterial street do not create or cause that wear and tear, so why are they the ones to foot the bill? To say it a different way, we are not alone in using and causing wear and tear on these streets, and we should not have to bear the cost of maintaining them alone. Those aren't my words, those are Mayor Carter's, from his budget remarks last week, and you know what? He's right. If that argument is good enough for the city, how can you turn around to us and say the exact opposite? We know you already agree with us, so why defend a policy which even the city accepts is unfair? The policy isn't simply hypocritical, it's also a failure. Anyone who's driven around in St. Paul can see that. At best, street maintenance is a Band-Aid, those aren't my words either, they're from your own Public Works Department last week. We know from that report that it would cost about $46.5 million annually just to maintain the city's streets at their current crumbling levels, and about $51 million annually to bring them up to where they should be. Mayor Carter's budget allocates just 20 million. So if approved today, these Mill and Overlay assessments would raise just $220,000 in revenue, and over 10 years, against a $29 million annual shortfall, that is a drop in the bucket. It does nothing to fix our streets, all it does is leave people with bills for thousands of dollars to pay for wear and tear they didn't cause. These oppressive taxes cause significant hardship for many in our community who never bargained for that hardship when they bought their homes, and we heard many of those people speak at the hearing on April 3rd. So we've asked the city repeatedly to explain this policy, and the best we've got so far is, "Other cities do this." Well, so what? Ramsey County doesn't, when that Eastern Parkway, which is four blocks from my house, resurfaced last year, those residents didn't get bills for thousands of dollars, it was paid for out of general taxation, like it should be. And if this is the only way, then why exactly aren't you planning to charge properties along 8 Mill Road for their $5 million bike path? From the way we see it, this is a policy which is morally indefensible, that the courts have thrown out repeatedly, that the mayor accepts is unfair, and that your own Public Works Department is telling you isn't working, and all you can say in defense of it is that you're not the only ones doing it. Look, we all want to improve St. Paul's streets, but $220,000 in assessment simply cannot fix a $29 million hole. Carry on like this, and our streets will be undrivable in just 20 years. We urgently need a real conversation about how to pay for our streets. There are plenty of viable alternatives, from a gas tax to tolls, user fees, usage restrictions for heavy vehicles, or gee, even just plain old property taxes. What's not an option, morally or legally, is taxing a handful of residents to maintain a public right of way. You tell us repeatedly that we do not own the roads in front of our homes, except for when the time comes to pay for them. So please, stop fighting your residents, listen to your own Public Works Department, listen to the mayor, work with the county and the state to find alternative means to fund this necessary work, withdraw these assessments for good, and let's find a fair way together to pay for the streets we all use. Thank you very much.
Thank you, please sign in. Is there anyone else here to speak on this issue? Mr. Heschler, welcome back.
Thank you very much. My remarks, of course, as the predecessor remarks, would go to all four issues that are coming up. Basically, I'm here to try to focus the council's attention on the law that has evolved since I started challenging these matters back in 2011. So, the fact of the matter is, the Minnesota Supreme Court, and now the district court, Judge Millenacher, has repeated that the key question for the city to look at is, what is the purpose of this expenditure? What is the purpose of this charge? And if the purpose of this charge is to regulate behavior on the part of the residents, then there could be a legitimate fee associated with that. But if the purpose of this charge is to raise revenue, and I think that that's what it is, and we're all faced with this problem, because we all recognize we have a significant street repair problem, we have a significant problem with paying for the street repair, if the problem is to, if the purpose of this is to raise revenue, then it can only be done by regular taxes, or as a special assessment, if you can show that there's a special benefit involved. And in this case, we have presented in the past, and for the past eight years, we have presented opinions of professional appraiser to the effect that there is no special benefit, there is a general benefit, there's no question there's a general benefit about improving the streets, but no special benefit. The city has been unable to come up with any appraiser who agrees with its position. The city, failing to come up with an appraisal that would show special benefit, then changed its theory and argued that this could be a fee, and it was that that the Supreme Court overruled and said, "No, it's not a fee, this is clearly a revenue-raising issue, and it's clearly something that has to be dealt with under the rules of the tax law." In the case that is before us today, we have these residents along arterial streets that are clearly intended to be, and are designed to be, servicing the entire metropolitan area, and these poor unlucky souls, Mr. Tagheoff is, of course, one who happens to have the long side of his lot along one of these arterial streets, these unlucky souls are in fact paying a substantially disproportionate share of the costs of maintaining the system because of that situation. But the main thing is that they are paying a fair, a fee that is not justified by any special benefit to their property, and that's what, this is really the Ferguson Effect. Ferguson, Missouri, of course, is notorious for funding its city budget on the basis of fees and fines, and I think that this needs to be thought about by the council here. You don't want to be in that situation, you don't want to be in a situation where you know that you do not have any professional appraiser who can support your position. In light of that, I am here to ask you to ask for a legal opinion, because you are naked, you're naked both politically and legally, because you don't, you are in a situation where you do have to have any defense for our challenge, and I'm asking you, I'm suggesting to you, that you should be asking for a legal opinion, a written legal opinion, from your city attorney or from the Attorney General, as to whether you have a better-than-l likely chance of winning against our appeal. In the past, every time we've been able to push it all the way to trial, the city has in fact caved in and given us a refund, but your staff continues to insist that the taxpayers should sue us in order to get a refund, and this business of "Sue me if you don't like it" is just not the right way for a body like this to be dealing with people. In light of the fact that this has been going on for so long, my new pleadings are asking for the imposition of attorney's fees under the Ku Klux Klan Act. The Ku Klux Klan Act, 42... The Ku Klux Klan Act, 42 USC 1983, is a statute passed in Reconstruction times, 1871, to allow, in that case, black citizens freed slaves who had constitutional rights that were being inhibited and trampled by recalcitrant, I might say, Democrats in the South. They were given a right to sue for damages and attorney's fees, the very people who, in fact, were depriving them of their constitutional rights. In this case, clearly, under clear Minnesota law, a taking without special benefit is a taking without due process, a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. And so the point simply is, there is a real possibility that I would be able to win a charge against you, that you are proceeding in bad faith. Dare I say, even that this is starting to look like fraud, that you know you don't have either a legal opinion defending you, you don't have an appraiser's opinion defending you, and the court cases are quite clear that a fee theory doesn't work. And so what I suggest is that you table this action tonight and ask your city attorney for a written opinion. It's not enough to just get an assurance that will defend you. Surely, they'll defend you. But the truth is, does the city attorney feel that it is more likely than not that you will prevail under these facts and circumstances, and under the law in the case that we've developed over the years?
Mr. Heschler, I'm going to pause you there. Can we pause the clock just for a second? I want to make sure, we have four minutes remaining, and I just want to see if there's anyone else here who wants to be heard on this item, so we can make sure people have fair time. Anyone else planning to speak on this item? Okay. The four minutes and three seconds are all yours.
Thank you very much. The, you and we, you and I, you and we, are friends, and I consider you all associates and colleagues, and it is very difficult to be in a situation where we can only talk in court. For years, I have been frustrated by an inability to have a candid discussion with the city council members as to what should be done, what could be done about this. I have been frustrated by having initiated the Citizens League effort last year to look into ways for the, for the city to receive pilot program, pilot payments from the nonprofits. And indeed, I said to the city that the nonprofits are willing to pay more or less what they were paying before. The downtown churches didn't want to pay five times more than other churches, but the point is, generally speaking, the nonprofits were willing to pay. The city walked away from that procedure, and I think wrongly so, on the feeling that we can't, we can't rely on that, because these nonprofits will have, they'll change their mind one year after another. The proposal could have been, and should have been, that this is a commitment by the nonprofits to, for five years. Yes, yes, we would let them out after five years, but they have to give a five-year notice to the city if they wanted to get out of the pilot program. The city walked away. Now, that's not enough money to solve your problem, no question about it, but it was, nevertheless, a significant opportunity to bring everybody together and to try to help solve this problem. And so it has been a disappointment for me and for others, and Mr. Tagheoff talks about the fact that he, too, would like to talk about different ideas and different approaches. But in this case, I'm here today to simply say, before you proceed further, before you give me a clean shot at you for proceeding in bad faith with knowing that you don't have a good defense, you should ask for your city attorney to give you a written opinion that will give you some protection, or it will give you a better understanding of the law. And if you haven't read Judge Millenacher's opinion yet, that came down 10 days ago, you should. It's very helpful and instructive, and basically says, the city's fee theory is nothing, this time around, for the street maintenance system work is nothing more than a rehash of the old argument that the Supreme Court overruled in 2016. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to move to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All in any opposed? Motion carries. Any discussion on this item? Ms. Prince?
Yeah, I am genuinely confused by a number of the issues that have been raised here. And I haven't read the judge's recently issued decision, but whether we're considering this a fee or a special benefit, can you respond to that, Ms. Tierney?
Yes, Councilmember Prince, the special benefit test, as Mr. Heschler was right, the special benefit test applies when the city is using its taxing power. In this situation, we are using our power to charge a fee, in which case the special benefit test does not apply.
I'm confused, and I'd like another week to get some more information.
Okay. Mr. Tao?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Vice President. I also like to, I would support that motion for one week, one week layover on this, and discuss privately with the city council, our attorney, on some of the question, and it doesn't need to be here.
So the motion on the table is to lay over for a week? Is that sufficient time? Ms. Nelson?
I guess I'm not aware of new develop, what I'm worried about is that we're about to go and do a series of these, and some will get laid over and some won't, and I don't know that the legal facts governing all of them are different for all of us to make our decisions. So if it's a matter of people just needing time to make sure they understand them to move theirs forward, I understand, but I personally worry about kind of the hodgepodge us moving or not moving, or biting the bullet or not on these. I recognize that we're making changes to this program, I hear about it all the time. I have had people come to my office hours to talk to me in person, I've taken phone calls, I've gone to people's doors. We know that this is impacting folks, and that we need to look at how we're structuring it, but I also don't know that there's a legal landscape that is different as of the time that we're voting on all these, to make sure that we're treating them differently. And I worry about some of them passing, some of them not, some of them being laid over forever. So I just want to name that, I don't know that it impacts how people want to treat theirs, but I guess, to that question, is there actually anything different than how we've advanced in these? I know that the fee question was just asked, but my understanding is, these are the assessments we've been doing, recognizing there are larger skill changes we're trying to make.
Yeah, and to that point, I would just say, I agree with that sentiment, and as someone who wasn't here at one of the meetings when we laid over some items and not other items of these street maintenance service charges, and then worked really, really hard with Council President Brenmoen and the administration to sort of follow up on that and change our policy in response to a lot of the advocacy that we heard tonight, and I know we didn't go as far as the folks who testified tonight would like, but reducing the charges pretty significantly in some cases. I think we've gotten as far as we are going to be able to go, certainly in the next couple weeks. And I agree that if we lay over one, we should probably lay them all over, so there isn't inconsistency. So I am not, I'm a little bit ambivalent about this, but I would question what we're going to learn in the next week that is going to change this. Further discussion, Ms. Nelson?
You know, I won't oppose a layover if it gives people time to answer questions, but if, at the end of that layover, the facts are the same and we move forward with these, I will be voting in favor of them. I just think we just kind of have to work with what we've got and keep moving. So that'd be my comment on where we're going about it.
So I guess I would just ask, is the motion still on the table to lay over for a week? And would the same motion be made, I think, by Mr. Tao for each of the items? Any further discussion? Okay, the motion on the table is to lay the matter over for one week till August 28th. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the resolution is laid over to August 28th, and that's at 3:30 PM. Item number 61, Resolution Public Hearing 19-206, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program, Mill and Overlay, Franklin Avenue, from Turnco Highway 280 to Pellham.
This is a public hearing? Oh, sorry, I need to move, in each of these, I need to move version two, same kind of textual changes from the city attorney's office, so I move version two in Legisstar. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six, or five in favor, no one opposed, the amendment is approved.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? I'm going to take folks at their word that when they spoke last time, they were speaking on all of these items. Anyone else? All right. Motion by Mr. Tilbert to close the public hearing and lay over for one week. Are you okay making that motion? Okay. Okay. Motion by Ms. Jalali Nelson to close the public hearing and lay over for one week. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is laid over to August 28th, again at 3:30. Item number 62, Resolution Public Hearing 19-208, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program, Mill and Overlay, Prior Avenue from University to Minnehaha.
And I'd like to move version two in Legisstar. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the amendment is approved.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Jalali Nelson moves to close the public hearing and lay over for one week. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the resolution, or the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is laid over to August 28th at 5:30, 3:30, sorry. Item number 63, Resolution Public Hearing 19-209, ratifying the assessment for the 2018 Street Maintenance Service Program, Mill and Overlay, Third Street from Ruth to McKnight.
I move version two in Legisstar. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the amendment is approved.
Ms., this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Prince moves to close the public hearing and lay the matter over for one week. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Five in favor, no one opposed, the public hearing is closed, and the resolution is laid over to August 28th at 3:30.
And if there's nothing else to come before us, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.